I had my own. That's it.
And we are recording. Excellent.
Really?
Let's call to order the regular meeting, the Public Utilities Commission, Thursday, August 8th, 2024. Time now is 3:32. Glad to be in with glad to be in this on this side of the room.
The flag of the United States of America and here Republic of the States, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right. They have a input?
No.
Correspondence?
No.
We're like speed lines. I believe that we approved the minutes for regular meeting from July 11, 2024. It's second quarter. Any discussion? You all here. See now, Friday morning, someone favors the eye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Uh, next report. Was Sebby gonna come in there or are you gonna do?
Brad wasn't gonna, he wasn't gonna make the call. He didn't really have much to add. It's the first month of the year.
Yeah.
You're gonna see a negative there as far as the deficit goes. We're sending bills out next week, so collections will start rolling back in. I assume for next, next meeting will be back in the plus.
I didn't stand. Any, any questions for North? Okay. Invoices. I think a move that, a motion that we approved, the invoice is in the trouble of $1,125,119.50. I was saying.
Thank you.
Okay. So this is pretty much scattered in Berchtesgaden.
It's pretty much the city of Danbury catching up with their billing from this, this past year that ended June 30th.
Ended one million dollars.
Correct. Everything else is relatively straightforward.
We have this budget. Um, we're okay. This isn't a surprise million dollar.
I think, I think I might have had 950,000. I don't have last year's budget in front of me. So we're, we're basically there.
Yeah, I believe this budget.
Yeah.
Any, um, any questions on invoices?
Well, just a curiosity question. They talk at all about the future going forward with?
No, other than, yeah, we gotta get together. We gotta have, you know, a meeting and I don't know where he's at. My last conversation with him from a couple of months ago was basically, you know, you can't just hand us an invoice for the new plant. You're gonna have to give us several months. You're gonna have to give all the towns time in order to know what's coming.
Yeah.
So they say.
But I can certainly reach out again, try to get an update.
There's no discussion. I'll turn your minds on favor of the eye.
Aye.
Are you opposed? Motion carries. There's no new business. Do you have anything that should be discussing?
No.
Director's report?
Okay, just filling in on the supply status, as I had talked about previously, wells 1A and 2A. We're, we're still doing all right. We're meeting system demand. We're, we're kind of monitoring closely. We're making daily adjustments manually. And, um, you know, we're watching closely, the output and the drawdowns. We're, we're staying above that kind of be careful level on the drawdowns. So we're all good with the wells at this point. We've got Chestnut Ridge pretty much put together, chemicals, everything. We're running into waste. You know, and everything's coming out nice and clean. We took, we took a sample. Chlorines, turbidities and bacteriological, we're all good. So it's ready when and if we decide we want to, you know, push that into place. I think we're gonna be good for a while without having to go there. Um, we, we were able to run well one. Um, ran it to waste, um, took back, bacteriological on it and it passed. So when we do go into a cleaning of well 1A, we know well one is in good shape. We weren't sure about the packing, so I had the contractor there and, and we ran it and we did pretty good with that. Um, Eureka, um, you know, I'm, I'm still gonna have them getting, getting it prepped so that if we need Eureka, it'll, it'll be available to us.
What's the holdup now?
Uh, just time, just, you know, you know, the guys running around doing, doing everything else at this point. Um, uh, you know, we had a couple of other issues that came up that took time, so. Um, speaking of which, Midway Drive, we had a, we had a second main break. The road's in pretty bad shape following that break. Um, what we want to do, Kelly and I, we, we want to replace the main, it's, it's asbestos cement water main. Um, we want to replace that whole section within that area of road that's destroyed. So that we don't rebuild the road and then still have that AC pipe underneath us. With that second break, the contractor kind of discovered that they were using the collars as deflection points. So when he fixed this last break and they, they broke off the collar, he, he said it was like under pressure. Cause basically they're, they're, they're basically deflecting the pipe going down the hill using the collars, which not the best way to do it. So we're thinking, we do definitely have to rebuild the road. We might as well replace that section of ductile iron and that short piece heading towards short. And then that intersection will be pretty much up to date and then we can rebuild the road.
All right.
Uh, Kelly roughed in about 110 feet. Um, I, I thought I'd have at least a ballpark estimate from the contractor before today's meeting. Um, he didn't, he didn't get back to me with.
Is that a dead end that goes?
I'm sorry.
Is that a dead end?
What we're gonna fix?
Yeah.
Or replace? Well, it's just basically the piece in the, in the middle of the intersection.
Right. It goes, it goes both ways. It goes up and then goes to the left.
Yeah, it goes down short. Sure. So we'll, we'll have a T with a valve going to short. We'll replace what's there for that. And then that piece going up the hill towards midway, we'll replace that with ductile iron. It's deep. So we'll be able to bring it up a bit and obviously we'll use ductile iron fittings to make some of those bends. So I think that's gonna be the better approach to, rather than just paving the road and something's gonna happen again at some point.
Do you think the, the tension on that pipe is limited to the intersection?
Well, you, you're going in a curve as you're going up the hill. Of course, then once you get further up, you're going around a whole loop.
Yeah.
So I don't know if they use fittings, ductile iron fittings at that point when they did it. You know, some of those curves are, are, are kind of, you know, they're, they're not slight. You're making a, you're making a full loop.
Yep.
So, um, they haven't had breaks really up at that end. I think the, the problem at the upper end was more the services. Um, you know, pinholes in the services, I think they're close to gas mains. I think that's what it has been in the past, so.
We had talked about redoing Midway Drive in, in the past. Is it something that we need to, you know, start thinking about doing the whole area?
It's, it's, I, I, the total footage might be like 3,600 feet. So it, it's not gonna be a cheap
No.
road to replace. I think it's in the right Pierce Capital Improvement Plan for the long-term replacements. I look at that as a dead end and you, you know, I look at that as if it was connected to a loop, it would be more of a critical main. I would make it more of a priority as opposed to replacing 3,600 feet of a dead end street. So, um, I think we'll just keep our eye on it and if we start to get more frequent breaks, then yeah, you're, you're gonna have to jump in and do something. But I wouldn't make that a priority with limited funding that we have going forward.
Were the other breaks, uh, the major breaks, were they just water surfaces up there before?
I, I, I think up the hill where we have patches, I, I think Kelly said they were more services that had pinholes in them. And it may be related to a, a gas main that's close. We've seen that in Norwalk where, you know, the copper pipe, you, you get some kind of electrolysis or you get some kind of stray current or something going on. And it, and it eats up the copper. But I don't think we've had any service leaks up there real recently.
You mentioned that to me, that being a thing, the gas pipes with electrolysis. And were you were spending any time like looking at that? Is that?
You know, we were talking about it with, with Dave Tinker as well, the contractor and, you know, he, we're, we're kind of guessing at what, what the heck is the cause, you know? I, I know in Norwalk, we had a couple of streets where we had a preponderance of leaks. And what we would end up doing is we would put a sleeve, a plastic sleeve and run the copper through the sleeve where it crosses the gas. So I don't know if they're grounded, if they're too close and they touch it places. We don't know if it's the individual homes that are grounded and you got stray current. It's don't really have a definitive answer. But I don't think we've seen it in a lot of streets.
It's not just related to Buffalo, Denver, I know.
Oh, no. Yeah.
It's not.
Exactly.
Fortunately there, you're on the hill, so I would think the ground itself probably dries out pretty fast. Cause moisture plays a big.
Yeah, yeah. And, and the chemistry of the soil might have something to do with it too, you know, iron, whatever's in there perhaps.
You have a process?
I don't, I mean, if, if, I think repaving the road is gonna be one thing. So replacing the main, you're probably just gonna get it up to grade with, with process. So just doing the main, I, i- i- if I use like $200 a foot, maybe 250 at, at the, at the most for about 110 feet, you might be looking at $30,000 worth of, a main replacement. And then we've got the, the road to repair. So we're, we're probably looking at $40,000 perhaps.
Is Bob gonna do all the prep work on the road for you?
I think with, with, with a big chunk like that, I think he brings in American paving and, and they kind of reclaim the road. So, you know, he usually, when we have situations like that, he'll put together a few different spots so that we kind of get a economy of scale from the, from the contractor. So I, I don't have a number from Bob or them, but I think that would be something he would probably farm out to them.
He didn't mention it and he mentioned reclaiming down short. Pretty good.
Yeah. Yeah, all that water just washed, you know, it went where gravity took it and it washed it down short.
But there was always a sag there anyways, where that break was.
Yeah.
Always the dip there.
Yes. I, I think what Dave Pinker found, the, the sewer that comes from short that ties into Midway. You got all those houses that are down low.
Right.
That sewer man, when we pop the manhole, it's gotta be 15, 18 feet deep or more. Dave said he, I think he found the shoring was probably left in place.
Yeah.
And I think where that divot is in the road, it kind of follows along the shoring. So whether it wasn't backfilled or the shoring kind of impacted the way they backfilled it. But it, it's kind of a mess and I think, yeah, we're definitely gonna have to, you know, I think replace the pipe to really do the right repair on the road. But I'll get some better numbers soon. Our plan was to kind of get it and go with it so that they can get the road rebuilt, you know, obviously before winter.
We have money in the budget?
Well, what, what I thought I could do is part of the things that I budgeted for were some, on Reservoir Street, we, we have limited valving. We were gonna put in, we, I budgeted for like three insertion valves. Um, I, I would replace this road if we see what we have left over. If we only put one in or if we only put two in on Reservoir, at, at least we're ahead of the game. And I think I would just divert funding from that to this. So I don't think we're gonna bust the budget. We'll just have to, you know, readjust.
How is Governor's name? Did you have picture of profits up there?
Yes, that was one of my items. We had a couple of things happen, kind of all one on top of the other. That Sunday, the 28th, we had the main, the main break. We had a fire at 33 Dodging Town. And, um, it looks like, I don't know if it was an electrical problem, but at Hoyts, solenoid valve on the altitude valve burned out, so the valve stayed closed. So I think we, we lost, you know, we weren't refilling the tank. Then of course they had the fire, so I think the water that would have gone up to Hoyts got diverted over to the fire. Um, so we had a low suction pressure. So the guys in the field had a, you know, make some adjustments, try to fill it manually. They, they bypassed the altitude valve that got water back in the tank. On top of that, we had, there was a low suction pressure fuse that blew. And that low suction pressure alarm didn't get cleared. So the pumps were limited on what they could put out. So it took them a few hours to get that all squared away. So they slowly got water back up the hill. So yeah, there was a few hours where
Is there a problem with that type of controls that you're using?
No, I don't think so. I mean, it's a package plant.
I understand. I was just wondering what, what, yeah.
It hasn't given us much, it hasn't really given us trouble, but when you have it, you gotta, you gotta scramble around and figure it out.
Yeah.
The, um, I, I, yeah, I think the only thing that the, the real problem was we only discovered it because neighbors complained in the middle of the night. Like, nobody really was aware of it, I think, until I called Kelly and said, hey, what's going on with the?
Okay.
I'm on top of the hill. That was the little pressure for Whipper Will and not.
Yeah, I, I don't know the timing of when any alarms came in, so I, I can't answer to that.
Cause he's, if I called him, it's probably out of my hour, it's gonna clock PM and I said, I will send people in. They were there all night.
Okay.
For that, so.
All right.
Okay, I'm just curious.
Yeah, I'll have to follow up. I wasn't aware of that. I assumed that they got alarms, whatever alarms they needed to get.
I think, I think Facebook was the owner.
Really?
Okay. Yeah. Anyway, that's it.
This was then.
The night, this would have been.
Sunday morning, Saturday night into Sunday morning, the overnight of Saturday.
Oh, wait, the fire was Sunday morning.
Yeah.
The, the fire was Sunday morning.
So this would have been Sunday night.
Afterwards?
Yeah, because, because what happened was the fire thing happened.
Okay.
And then it was still that night that they didn't have water pressure with the wheel and, um, whatever, at the top of the hill. And they were still complaining at 5:00 AM in the morning. So it was Monday where they finally figured out how to jump it to get water pressure. And then found the fuse. So it was Monday morning. So Sunday night, we didn't know that that was going on until it all came on Facebook about 5:00.
Okay.
So I called him maybe six, seven, eight, maybe nine. I don't know what time it was. Anyway, I don't think they were aware of that.
All right. I'll follow up and see what kind of alarms we should have gotten.
Yeah.
And where they ended up that they got sent or didn't get sent.
Okay. What else?
Uh, that was, that, that was about it really. I'd report on the irrigation status. I don't have any real hard and fast numbers, but the summit, looking at some of their numbers, and again, we've had rainy weather, so that's another reason why probably their demand is down. But after we implemented that irrigation policy, I spoke at length with Bill O'Halloran. They got their vendor up there the following, like Monday. And they, they worked on splitting their system up. Their system is kind of wacky, like we have like, I think four different places where we have them metered, but they have like multiple controllers. So where we meter them here, they've got a controller going to this portion of the, of their system. So they, they were, they had to split it out by controllers. And they were able to figure out how to kind of split them in, in half. And they're gonna have half the system running on two days and half the system running on two days. So they, they were able to, I think, comply with what we were asking for. As opposed to they used to just order everything like every night. This was a couple of years ago, so they definitely made some adjustments.
I got a question. Down the wells, we had to put that generator in to run the other spare well.
Yes.
Well, it's a problem with the power from the car coming. The line too small coming in or what is it?
No, when, when the wells, when the replacement wells got put in, I, I think it was either the, I'm not exactly sure. It's either what the generator can handle amperage wise or it's the incoming power. But when they did that project, it's noted that you can't run well one and 1A at the same time. Likewise, you can't run two and 2A at the same time.
So we got four wells down there and we can use two.
You can use two at a time.
But in order to use the third, we have to bring a generator. What do we have to do?
Well, I, honestly, Pete, as I looked closer at it.
Giving you our.
No, 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 I know. As I looked closer at it, I, it really wouldn't even work well, I don't think, to run well one and 1A together. Cause of the way the piping comes in, there's no check valve left on well number one, cause of the way they redid the piping.
You think you should have looked at it, our engineer should have looked at that and put them in? I mean, we, I mean, we got four wells that we're gonna use two. It doesn't make any sense.
The, the other, the other issue is probably the diversion, the registered diversion. You're only allowed to pull so much water out of the ground in a diversion.
Well, we pulled, well, we flew out with a generator, pulling 200 gallons a minute, right?
Well, I think the generator was just to get it up and running, make sure it was good to go, so we switch.
To run the other well, yeah.
I was planning on using it, but it really wasn't gonna work the way it's all piped up.
And use it all?
I didn't want to try it. I, I, I didn't want to have anything go wrong and then that, that's our only supply. So I, I, I wasn't comfortable doing it. I, I had planned on perhaps doing it, but then when push came to shove, when I realized there's no check valve on the end of that pipe, I wouldn't want the water coming in from well 1A going backwards through well one.
It just seems crazy to have four wells and you want to use two.
Um, what, do you know about what year that was all done?
Uh, I think they went online in 2017.
I'll look back and see if there's any discussion. Just out of curiosity, who was on the board and? That's why I did it.
I mean, honestly, you, you don't really, the two wells should keep up with our demand. And I think there's also a diversion issue there. That, that's why it probably wouldn't run that much more.
Church is coming into it, right?
When the time comes.
That wouldn't be a bad exercise to just look at the piping and the wiring.
Yeah, well, they, they were there when we ran it to get it, in case we had to repack it. And, um, his comment was, well, you know, I was concerned with no check valve on that because if you had that pump and well running, there's a separation valve between 1A and 1, okay, which is normally closed. So you'd run one to waste, that valve would be open. You'd have to start closing the waste valve and open, I, I don't think we would time it outright. And I was afraid we'd be pushing the pressure from well 1A backwards through well one. And he says that wouldn't be good for the pump in well one. So I saw more things that could go wrong than could go right.
All right, well, I'll.
Yeah, you don't want to run.
Yeah. Yeah. Any other, anything else?
No, that's all I had for that.
Move on to old business. Uh, first off, it's consideration, except basically surveying and related easement at property expansion corporate.
They, I'm sorry, Dan, they're, they were not ready, they were not ready for today. That needed to be, that needed to be tabled. I put it on because I thought they would have been ready.
All right. Motion, motion table, yeah, second, any discussion on favor?
Aye.
All right, table. Am I your replacements?
Okay, so after the last reading, we, we had 256. I think Kelly told me as of last Friday, we were down to 215. And that with the work orders we had from this week, we're probably somewhere around 205. So we've gotten it down from where we were previously. I think from the April reads, we were 360 some odd, down from like 1,100. So I think we're gonna continue to see X number or gonna just keep showing up because they're 20 years old.
Yeah, that's a lot.
But it's, it's, it's manageable.
Okay. Uh, PC cap for projects status?
Okay, a couple of things. Uh, the Paul Street pump, we've ordered it. That's a 20 to 24 week lead time. So sometime this winter. Uh, Bergstrom, things haven't been moving too quickly. The roof trusses are being installed. We're waiting for the roof to get put over those trusses and then the metal building can proceed. So we're kind of in a little bit of a lull, but I think we're waiting on their contractor who should be available relatively soon. Uh, as far as the status of the project, uh, we've paid through about 60%. And timing wise, we're about two thirds of the way through. Um, something new that came up, EverSource was out. We have to, we have to set a couple of poles and extend those primary lines. As we go around the trees that are there, there are several that are leaning right towards the power lines. EverSource had some concerns with that. Um, they're, they're not gonna make us cut the trees down, but I think it's, now's the time to cut some of those trees down. Um, I met with the tree warden, um, and what I want to do is use the town's contractor. Um, I think we get a pretty good price from them. He thinks he needs maybe two to three days to take down between five and nine trees that are potentially hazardous. Um, versus going back to COVAX, making it part of the project, having their contractor give a number. They've got to go with prevailing wages. COVAX is gonna turn around and add their 50%. COVAX had no issue with us doing it on our own if we wanted to. So if I have all seasons out there, they're like 1,800 bucks a day. It's gonna be between 3,600 and 5,400. So I'm thinking, so that route as opposed to maybe eight or 10,000 through COVAX.
Did you ask other sources they would have West Street do it? If it's gonna hit their wires?
Um.
A lot of times they're good about that. They just did my street or Bob's was, we did a bunch of rounds.
The wires aren't there yet, the wires that they're gonna put in. So I, I, I don't think they're gonna have their guy. Basically, they said, what they said to the contractor when they met, if they put the wires up and the trees fall down, we're gonna end up paying for it. I don't necessarily believe that's true. I think that's what just that guy happened to say. But I don't want to put myself, put ourselves in that position.
Wouldn't they have to clear those trees and put the wires up?
No, no, I mean, the, the line, the, the line's gonna go, they're gonna be, set a new pole here. The lines will go to that pole and then to that pole. The trees are all kind of skirting right here. But they're all, several of them are just growing right out.
The private line. We're painful.
Uh, well, they're, the contract, yes, we're paying.
What I'm saying, but now we're adding to it, it's like a private line, you gotta.
I, I, you know, with, yeah, we're the only service going there. So whether they consider that a private line, it's still, to me, it's their primaries.
EverSource was still up to a place.
Correct.
They're a boss.
Correct.
They don't charge you to put on.
I, I, right. So I don't think it's true that we have to pay, but I know if we take the trees down, if I do it through the.
It's a preventative maintenance.
It's a preventative maintenance. I mean.
Are they big trees or little? Tiny.
Half of them are probably like this. He'll, he'll knock them down quick and put them right to his chip.
They're good guys.
Yeah. So I, I think it's the cheaper route to just have the town contractor do it.
Just do it?
Yep.
You think that, um, I don't think it requires a vote or anything on our part.
No, I'm just, you know, just updating you. That's all. Um, and then the only other project is the heavy cleaning on the sanitary sewer for 13. Green Mountain is, they were gonna be back, uh, this, this week. They were delayed again. So I, what Weston Sampson told me was they're, they're probably be ready in a couple of weeks to be back.
I have a question on the, the water plant.
Yes.
Are we on schedule with that? I, I've never seen a project move so slow.
We already know that somebody electrical gear is.
Yeah, I understand.
And I think that's definitely gonna push the substantial completion date, which is a December date. So.
And, you know, I, I, I can see, because we're waiting for equipment to provide, but everything else should be ready.
Yeah, I mean, there's, there's things happening behind the scenes. There's been testing of the, of the, uh, controls through the instrumentation contractor. You know, there's, there's materials that we paid for that are at the ready. Basically, we gotta get the building enclosed and then I think electrical plumbing instrumentation and all the piping for the, uh, for the filtration system is gonna happen from there. I think basically that piping is ready to be shipped. COVAX asked the vendor if they could still hold on to it. They didn't really have a great place to have it. The vendors, you know, accommodating them. So there's things that are gonna happen as soon as there's a building with a roof over our head.
Did they order all the electric?
I'm sorry.
Did they order anything else they need? So electric seems to be the thing.
Oh, they ordered the generator like probably back in, you know, Jan- January of last year. Yeah. So it's, it's the, um, it's the switchgear. They had an October date and, or no. They got a, the date got pushed whenever that was into November. And they, they still don't have a firm. So you're kind of just subject to availability of supplies. But you're right, Rich. But I mean, they, COVAX has worked, they, they've gotten a lot of the site work done. They've gotten a lot of it done. Recently, they just passed the, uh, they pressure tested the sewer main. They want to do the water main. It's kind of on the list to be done. I'm having them hold off at this point because I don't want to give them 100 gallons a minute when I need the 100 gallons a minute going to our tanks. So I said, if it's not on the critical path, we'll hold off on that for a little bit and they understand.
Anything with the PFAS? Are we good?
Uh, PFAS, the last claim that I wanted to submit was called a special needs claim. And I put in for the change order that we had for the extra piping. Whether that's gonna get approved or not remains to be seen, but I, at least I got it submitted.
Okay. Is there ever a utilities supervisor report?
Uh, I kind of mixed in what Kelly probably would have reported on, so.
One other thing for the good of your, um, I, I just found out there's some public hearings coming up for the regional water authority. As you may have heard, regional water authority is looking to purchase Aquarian. What they would do is they would create a aquarium water authority, which would still be run by the parent board of RWA. Uh, but there'd be a, um, another board, a, a community board made up from one member of every community. That would be appointed by each community, each, uh, chief like official. Anyway, they're, they're coming up in August. Check out the updates. There's some hearings if you're interested. I did talk to their president, CEO, uh, two weeks ago. You know, had a few questions answered, but at the other day, there's a lot we don't know what's coming. So. Say, Joe, don't know that it'll affect us in any way, but you know, my, my always thing is are they gonna come trying to complain about the municipal water company? That's.
We saw it happen last time.
Yeah.
They tried that, so.
Yeah, well, I I, um, I brought that up to the CEO, president of their company and said, by the way, there's a huge issue that without here where they tried to sell years ago when our community would not support anything like that. And he would, he had a surprised look on his face. So I was wondering if they had some thoughts. That kind of made me stop for a minute.
Well, the aquarium system is pretty significant. So, I mean, we're, we're a very small piece compared to that, so.
But the, uh, you know what it is, I think they, when they, when they come in each community, they probably want the whole thing. Because a lot of what they do also is, you know, they they develop non-core businesses, you know, like plumbing, all these other things. That way they can offset the repair supposedly. Supposedly, because I think the prices are a little higher than Aquarian right now. Um, and there's been a push from the state to take all the municipal systems and everybody put together. So I think the state would love to have us, you know, somehow fold it in someday. But it's fun.
Yeah, yeah, but we're we're a viable system and we're not struggling and
I agree.
I don't, I don't see them forcing that.
Yeah, if you listen to Brian, we're not going down a fight.
They're not giving Aquarian or order, that's for sure.
Anyway, just, I just want the people to know that the, uh, what's coming, that we're in here inside. All right. Anything else that needs to be added?
Motion, sure.
All of them, aye? And much past, it's gonna turn at four oh three.
Go ahead here.